With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're gonna have to take things a little bit out of order here for our agenda because we got some people up in a FinCon meeting also. Doing that, so they're multitasking right now. It's where Mr. Farrar is and the fire chief and police chief. And Mr. Valise is on his vacation this week too. So, um, we'll start with number three because Mr. James McKeon is here. And number three is gonna be the emergency manager, management managers' monthly report. And electronic signage. Okay. What do you get, sir?
I'm Jim McKeon, the emergency management, uh, sir. Uh, I got the June report, I'll start like that. June third, we helped with the graduation ceremony for parking cars. Cars basically pulled the school grounds filled up and then they went out on the road. Got that. But two members helped out. The next day, they had soccer test. Though soccer didn't go off that day, uh, cause it had a blow fuse, but there was, that's been fixed. The seventh, June, I attended the National Grid, um, annual emergency preparedness meeting. Uh, they basically go over safety, what they do, talk about, uh, what happened. Emergency pre- preparing his plans for the upcoming year and stuff. They usually do that in June. Last couple of years, they did that virtually, but this year they finally got to do it in an actual meeting. June fourteenth, attended the sandbag training put on by the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, it was a good course, proper way to build the sandbag walls and show a couple other flood control devices that they help out. June fifteenth, our light tower that was gifted to us, uh, everything got put into service, it's all registered, it's all ready to go. Actually, Dave just got, uh, lettered up. It's got some letters on it. Twenty second, he did that Mima tabletop exercise, Spencer. Uh, talked over, uh, the preparedness and the aftermath of what a large hurricane would do to this area. Worked with the Brookfield and Spencer, representatives from Police, Fire, Board of Health, Emergency Administration, County Commissioner, attended about a three hour exercise. And we get into, uh, first concerts, um, which are pretty well attended, County Dean Park. We helped the Parks Department park all the cars, roads. Had four roads. June twenty third was the first one. And then June thirty, it's, uh, we had the second concert. Which both concerts were very well attended. The one with the petting zoo, that was also record attendance, I think, uh, it was ten rows of cars and counted probably about a hundred sixty cars across the view. Actually, that petting zoo's coming back at the end of the month.
They're a good petting zoo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're really nice even.
The only thing is that little rain shower came through and half the.
Yeah, everybody left.
And then some, but some people came back after. So, uh, it was still a good night. So that's pretty much what we did for June. Uh, so now I'll talk about the, uh, signboard a little bit. As you know, the flashing signboard, we've had in town, moves around different locations. Um, last couple of months, it's been, uh, only working on plugging in the batteries and the solar wasn't quite working right. So he got a call of, uh, rain corp, people have, you know, look at it. He came out, checked the batteries, uh, charging system, uh, replaced a couple, uh, small controller batteries. And checked, make sure everything was charging operation. He also found the batteries, one of them was bad. So he took that one out and right now currently we're lucky they want one battery, but it's been running for hardly a six months. Um, we do have an invoice, we're gonna need that Jim to go over some more details on the deal. But we do have the invoice there, the work he hardly did. We know if, gotta get it on top of, if, uh, ARPA funds could help or, uh, possibly could get a grant to do the other, getting all batteries back in play. Cause this originally does have three big huge batteries, about the biggest is two chairs. They're not like car battery, they're, uh, they take, uh, have to constantly check them with water and stuff, but these newer batteries, he says, you don't have to check the water levels, they're low, neat, it's, um, probably better, they'll last a lot longer.
Okay. What do you have for price so far?
Couple different. Um, if we were to do the new, three newer batteries, it'd be just, just over two grand. And invoice, um, currently, I gotta figure out where to get the money from, is about now, nine hundred fifty dollars.
How much?
Nine hundred fifty dollars.
Okay. And we can look into how to pay for that.
Was that, was that worked out in this quarter, twenty three?
Uh, the work was done in October.
After July.
So.
Those issues?
Who, who's in charge of that sign, is that Highway?
Um, well, that's, uh, it came through, um, Homeland Security, uh, back in the early two thousands. And I'm not sure if Highway did some repairs to it in the past, uh, but, uh, he started, he started, he was basically, town department uses it, but it won't be on this again, the county used the, Highway used it, road closed, first man closed, closed roads, uh, parks. For that, so it's used all the time, different baseballs and softball, you know. Everyone's asking, Boy Scouts, K and Rives, it's, it's heavily used, it's all, you know. Usually downtown, but we, sometimes we put it down, that's where we, the fire station, had to be, have a fire station plugged in, most of the time. Or, but now it's, seems to be working, so already more sun due has got to be here.
Okay. Yeah, um, definitely give Jim Farrar the quotes.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll look at how we, he'll see where we have money that can pay for that, where, what account comes out of it. You know, if anything, we can look at using ARPA for it, we still have fourteen grand left. So, yeah, it's something we need to have going because.
It's part of the emergency plan system to get people. And if it doesn't work by power, can't plug it in, then there's no power, so we need it to work by battery.
Absolutely. It'd be nice if we can get a second one, because then we could put it down in West Warren and Warren and have the two.
So, we could work on that. That might be in the works in the coming time.
It'd be good if another grant could come up and buy a second one. All right, anything else, sir?
Uh, the other thing, uh, it's kinda, not bringing up town, uh, the railroad ties along town, downtown area. It's kinda like need a wall across the border. And if TSX could be contacted, question about, are they taking them out or are they gonna sit there for a year, it's gotta block you.
I have kinda got concerned about those because we got them here and then in West Warren too. And, you know, I, I just don't want a fire starting there because if that catches on fire, that's a significant chunk of, of wood that's gonna sit there, it's gonna burn a lot, you know.
They also have a chemical fissure or something on them that when they heat up, they use, it's.
Yeah.
Not the greatest thing to have sitting around.
I know Jim Farrar contacted them because residents were asking about if they can grab some and use them for other things. And he contacted them for that and they said no, uh, they had a plan for them. And they also don't want people just going over there taking them because if somebody gets hurt on their property.
Yeah.
So, which is understandable, you know, you don't want anybody getting hurt trying to get those things.
Just kind of work it up to see what they have for, uh, planning.
Yep.
To get rid of them. We're not sitting there.
Here, here's the man right now, he might know. So, the railroad ties in Warren and West Warren, um, have you gotten any updates on them, when are they gonna remove those?
So they're, from my understanding, after speaking with Maurice, um, O'Connell, the railroad ties, uh, the removal of those is being done by a third party, so they contracted, so, um, the rail company, uh, has contracted with a third party and they're going to be, you know, in the process of removing them once they finish pulling them all out and replacing them with the new ones. So they aren't piling them up on the property until that time. Hopefully, um, you know, they will be removing them shortly, so, but it's a third party, it's not, um, the rail company.
Okay. Yeah, we're just concerned that if they catch on fire or anything like that, or, you know, God forbid somebody gets hurt trying to take one out of there or something.
I see that as a big problem.
Well, yeah, that was, uh, you know, there, there was some comments that were asked of, of me, and I, I, I talked to Maurice. You know, there were some residents that wanted to use them for like flower boxes. Um, unfortunately, um, due to liability issues, they, they don't want people to take them, to touch them because they could, you know, there could be nails in them or, you know, s- you know, people could get hurt on.
But they're full of creosote, I mean, they're nasty, it's hazardous waste, right, you don't want that near you.
Hey, uh, anything else on that?
No.
Anything else?
One more thing about tomorrow's concert with the.
One second. Rich, did you have a question about that part?
Yeah, the ties, yeah. I don't know.
Can you just identify who you are?
Uh, Rich, Majoris Warren. I don't know if they do leach or not, but if they do, um, when they did the Warren, when they redid downtown, there's a storm drain there that never got updated because they said they couldn't update that. So that storm drain that's right underneath the underpass, right there where those were all piled, goes straight to the river. So, I don't know if there's any, from a conservation standpoint, I don't know if there's any, if they wanna, you know what I mean? I don't know. Maybe they can pile them somewhere else.
Yeah, hopefully they get them out of there soon. We don't have to deal with them at all, you know. I, I noticed some piles getting pretty big behind, behind the old train station.
I know when they're spread out, it's not as big a deal, but if you have them concentrated like that and it's right where the drain is, we get the amount of rain we've been having. I don't know what kind of an issue it could create.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could just follow with them, you know, ask when they're gonna get them out of there. Cause if they say, well, fall sometime or hit this on, no, work on it sooner, get them out of here, we don't want them hanging out.
Well, I mean, maybe you could ask them too, is there any danger of any leaching of, of anything out of it in concentrated effort?
See if there's like MSDS on it.
Yeah.
Material safety data sheet on, on them because they are chemically treated, so. Thank you, thank you, Rich.
And the last thing I have is, uh, for concert tomorrow, uh, the Parks Commission is gonna make a determination, if they're gonna have it or not. I'm getting going tomorrow, so as soon as that happens, we'll get it out to the public. We're hoping to have it, but this weather's kind of.
Yeah, it's been creating.
Two different waves of heavy rain coming through. Not the friendliest.
No. No, and it keeps on showing lightning too throughout the day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't look good.
Understorms are the most.
Inch of rain.
Yeah.
Is there, is there food at these, um, Friday, um, events?
Yes, they do have that.
So they have the concession stand is open, cause I thought that's where the band is, but.
Yep, the band's under the pavilion.
Mm-hmm.
And their concession's behind.
Okay.
On the side.
Okay.
They have a tent up and stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, Rebecca Sarah, I'd just like to ask Jimmy through the chair if, um, is there a time when the Parks will make a determination, at what point during the day, or?
Uh, I'd say probably between ten and noon.
Oh, okay.
By noon.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, tomorrow's a big one because it's touch, touch a truck tomorrow.
Yes, so we should try.
Yeah, yeah.
That's usually the big event and.
That's the biggest concern.
Isn't, isn't the, um, petting zoo tomorrow too?
No, that's gonna be the twenty eighth, though, one of the last ones.
Okay.
Uh, car show, uh, was gonna be next, the twenty first of the next, next Friday. But with, if this one happens to be canceled, uh, they're going to be combined, the truck and the car show together.
Okay. It's gonna be big.
Yeah.
All right.
We got room.
Yeah. Very good. Very, anything else, sir?
Uh, that should be it for now. Just kidding.
All right, did you have any questions?
I don't know, I'm just curious, like, about the, uh, Mima tabletop thing with hurricanes, was there anything interesting out of that?
Um, they're going to be, um, sending out, well, right now they've got a little busy with working out west probably on the, with the really epic.
Yeah.
Uh, but they're gonna be coming up with a report to us, uh, about what could, uh, the different things that they're approved on or something. So once that comes, I'll present it to you guys or the people that have attended, um, or can have it on the.
Some, I think beaver dams are gonna be related to that somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, uh, beaver dam issues, the, the other thing, yeah, that beaver dam didn't go again, uh.
Yeah.
And it's what, it was the bigger, um, dam up in K O A. It's the same chunk that comes, ever since two thousand and five, it was a large beaver dam, uh, thick. And that chunk, half of it went away, so every year the beavers build it back. But I think they're building it back with debris that isn't strong, so it's breaking in that same hole. And the rest of the dam was holding. So it's that same gap that keeps breaking year after year. And it goes down through that whole valley. It actually went over some other smaller beaver dams as you get on the side of Dean Park. And then it went down through Spring Street.
So it's poor, poor workmanship.
All the, yeah, the beavers.
Gonna get them beavers and drainage.
Yeah, they use the water. But it is the same exact spot that gives.
And it's the state land that it's on.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it has to be coordinated with the parties involved, the state.
And they don't want us touching any beavers.
Well, when it happens, uh, it starts showing up through Spring Street area and it crosses through main and then you have half an hour or so and then it really flows through and then about an hour it goes down.
The big wall of water.
So the dam might break like three to four hours. And it might take quite a while to get there where it shows up down West Building Plaza.
You think it takes three to four hours from when it breaks to get down to the sixty seven?
Probably take, it takes a while because there's a lot of land that it can fill up.
Oh, I see, oh, okay.
Channels.
Flood, flood plain.
Because actually when it broke that Sunday, uh, the heaviest rain was from noon until two. And then everything was flowing like crazy, we got like two inches of rain in that two hours. And that's probably when it went between two and three, you have to, it showed up about six down that, uh, bottom.
Wow.
Okay. Yeah, well, we gotta figure out the beavers and Jeremy's, is he back yet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did we ask him about the beaver stuff yet?
So, um, with regards to the beavers, um, I, I received a call, um, just this week from Stuart Beckley, the town manager out in there. Um, and they are, uh, conducting a, um, they, their fire chief wants to conduct a, um, uh, you know, a discussion with the state officials uh, from Fisheries and Wildlife, um, about, you know, the beaver situation, um, and possible, uh, you know, if there was a break or a flood that was to happen that would roll into, uh, Ware, where effect Ware community. Um, and they were actually scheduled to have it for this Friday. I don't know if it was definitely going to happen, um, but they said that the, um, the representative, Representative Smola wanted to attend, but he's not going to be able to attend this Friday, um, so they're going to have a follow-up meeting. They weren't even a hundred percent sure if they were gonna be able to put it together by this Friday. But it seems as though that Ware wants to also have, you know, join in on it. And I did reach out to, uh, Joe Rogers from the, uh, Fisheries and Wildlife as well as, uh, Ms. Jones. Um, and I'm waiting to hear back from them, they were in meetings all day today, um, but I did, uh, ask for a return call, so. Uh, I think that we should probably start there, maybe bring the, uh, the rep in, Representative Smola, and, uh, see if we could, you know, attack that situation. I know, uh, the chief is, uh, you know, is also, Adam, uh, has also expressed some concerns with it. I had not had a chance to talk to Jeremy about it yet.
You know, we had a meeting with, with, um, Todd Smola, the, um, reps, uh, State Environmental and, and Gobi, and all discussed it. And they said, yes, we'll allow it, the trapping, but the trapping, um, the animal has to be used for purpose. It has to be used for fur or meat or a purpose. They won't give nuisance animal trapping. So as long as we can find a trapper that will do it for that specific purpose, they'd be okay with it, but not, not to eradicate them, you know, so.
I do know a trapper. He lives in Holland, he's state certified, he teaches all the trapping and he traps for birds.
That would be good, we'd be chances, want to trap during summer or fall.
He'd trap it anytime.
Really? Okay. I know a lot of them will only trap during winter, so.
I'm sure he would trap it anytime.
Okay. Be an option too.
Jeremy has a budget, so.
He does have a budget.
He has a budget.
Yeah. Gotta get rid of some of them because they keep on just populating. You know, we take out, we take out eight of them, there's another thirty.
They move down the stream like in this case from that big swamp and then they, they're setting up beaver dams closer to Spring Street area from the back side of Dean Park now. So it's that whole, actually, valley.
Could be creating a water break now for us. I don't know. But yeah, we definitely gotta deal with these, these beavers because they, they get, the, the damage just keeps on happening. We know it's gonna happen and it's happening more and more frequently, so.
Right.
Seems to always happen on a holiday weekend too. It's been on Memorial Day weekend and now it's Fourth of July weekend, the same.
For patriotic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We wanna let everybody know they're there, you know. All right, anything else, sir?
Uh, I think I'm good for now.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
No.
And I'm good. All right, oh, one quick question. The stuff in the Old Town Hall, in, you guys had a cert room in there?
Yes, actually.
You guys get that cleaned out yet?
Yeah, yes, I, um.
Okay.
End of June, I just forgot about that too. I, uh, took out that file cabinet, have, uh, the old, it was, uh, a lot of old, really old papers and just most of it.
You know, they're like old flashlights and all kinds of equipment and stuff.
Flashlights, usable, uh, with some batteries and get rid of the stuff. Yeah, that's taken out of that, I don't know, room there.
Just wanted to make sure that got cleaned out.
Yes.
Been trying to clean that.
Yep.
The building out, getting anything out of there, a little bit, yeah. It's a lot of stuff stored.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, we got that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
All right.
You switched four and five in our tabs.
For you, for you, sorry.
Four is the encumbrances, right?
So are you ready for four on the encumbered funds? Mr. Farrar?
Yes, yep, yep.
You're all set for that?
Yep, we're ready.
Second or five?
It might be your.
I was just like.
Okay. So, onto four. And that's a discussion of possible vote on the encumbered funds needed. And what can you tell us about these?
So, um, the, the first item is, is the EDA grant, um, is so, we have, uh, seventy thousand reserved for that. That will most likely be owing out to rebid within the next couple of weeks, um, in, in anticipation. I think that we'll have some better success this time, so we have encumbered those funds for the EDA grant, uh, seventy thousand.
It's EDA?
Yeah.
It says EPA.
Sorry.
EDA grant, um, and then associated building wreckers is, uh, for the dumpster that we have out back. Um, that was for cleaning out, um, Town Hall and the police station, um, as well as, uh, some other, uh, organizations in this building. Put some stuff in there, so, uh, anticipating a bill of about fifteen hundred dollars for that. That will be going away within two weeks, I would imagine. And National Grid bill, Karen had indicated to me that she's anticipating a, a, a National Grid bill, gas bill, uh, for another two hundred dollars.
Okay. And when, when is the dumpster going away? Are we just having it emptied or is it going away?
It would be going away, hopefully going away, maybe we'll get another one, I mean, if we need, if there's a need.
Okay. All right. Because there's still more stuff over there, right, that needs to be thrown away?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's almost, it's almost.
Like seven, seven dumpsters now or something like that, right?
Yeah, it's almost, it's almost done. Well, I mean, he, we started with, with just this building, with the dumpsters and, you know, it's kind of taken off, you know, with, uh, you know, other stuff. There's still a lot of stuff at Town Hall that needs to be taken care of, you know, cleaned out. We need, you know, manpower to, you know, to, to do a lot of that too.
Yeah. Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
No.
Can you make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the following seventy thous-, uh, the following encumbrances. Seventy thousand to be encumbered from selectman matching grant to EDA grant. Fifteen hundred to be encumbered from Town Hall repair to associated building records, wreckers. And two hundred dollars to be encumbered from Shepherd building expense to National Grid gas bill.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you very much on that one. All right, so continued discussion, follow up with the State, State Ethics Commission regarding a request for special, special municipal employee status. Okay. Following up to your question, and from what they said, can you just kind of briefly?
Sure. So, uh, the, as part of, uh, what had transpired at our last meeting, Mr. Chairman, I was asked to call the State Ethics Commission, which I did. I was, uh, I spoke with Lauren Duka, uh, from the State Ethics Commission. And she had indicated to me, um, that, um, yeah, th- th- there, there could be a, you know, a potential conflict of interest uh, for, for two of the, two of the reasons. And one reason would be is that, um, in the capacity that this. Um, and one reason would be is that, um, in the capacity that this person has, as a, as a town official, serves on a conservation commission, serves on a cert, serves on, um, Veterans Council. So, um, in, in those official capacities, uh, that would have to be deemed, uh, those boards would have to be deemed special municipal employees. That is purely up to the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, um, and so, um, they would need that. The other hurdle, um, which would have to, uh, overcome is the special permit, and the special permit within itself, um, there was a question of one of the board, of one of the members of the committee, uh, who currently has a special permit and is going to be renewing a special permit for gravel permit. Um, the gravel permit, permit, um, you know, would, would need somebody to come forward. Uh, it was my understanding that, um, the, it's run by a, um, a corporation, uh, and it has no other officers but the individual, uh, that serves on the board, on the various boards in town. Uh, and the, um, corporation, uh, has no other employees. Um, and so this person would have to either represent the, the, the corporation or have an attorney or a consultant represent, uh, the entity in front of, you know, the, the granting authority of the special permit, which also, uh, brings to the next hurdle, which would be the financial i- i- impact of it, uh, which would be, um, you know, the gravel permit in question. Uh, it makes, uh, there's, there's money derived from that gravel permit. Um, and so, uh, as being a, um, you know, a municipal, uh, official, uh, and, you know, going in front of the body to get a special permit, uh, that, that entity, uh, is, is, it has a financial interest. Um, and there's a financial, um, connection between, you know, the gravel permit, uh, and the special permit. So, um, you know, other than being deemed a special municipal employee, uh, the Ethics Commission sees no other way around it.
Got your question answered now?
Well, I had the answer at the meeting.
Well, we, we confirmed it, so, that, that's the answer, so.
So, what's?
We, we looked into it, so.
And, and what's your position?
We're not doing special municipal employee for all those departments. That's, that's not gonna happen, so.
So, that.
We've already voted on this, said no.
So you're, so then I'm forced into resigning from all my positions?
That is up to you.
Well, you guys are all forcing my hand.
No, that, that's up to you. If you want, if you want the special permit and go that way, then that would have you do that, um.
So in order for me to get my special permit, I have to incur costs to an attorney for the pleasure of volunteering for the town?
Well, no, I don't think that resolves that issue, right?
There's a couple different.
Still employee.
There's a couple different hurdles.
Special municipal employee status, I'm able to do it. The town council, the town council said that without a special municipal, I, I, I either have to make a living, or I, I have to give up making a living to volunteer for the town.
Right.
And that's a position that they'd rather see us resign than to volunteer for the town?
Again, that's your decision, what you wanna do, if you wanna do that, if the special permit, or.
I would just as soon still volunteer for the town. Uh, is there a reason why you don't want to make special municipal re, uh, status?
Because.
You guys have it. It's not like it's a new thing in town.
We would have to grant that to all those boards.
Yes.
All those members, and that would create a slippery slope. It also creates.
What kind of slippery slope?
Because how many members are on cert team? That, that would be all of them.
And, and.
It would be all the members on the Veterans Council, the members on conservation.
But why is it a slippery slope? It's a legal way of doing, of, of getting volunteers to work for town.
Yes, but, again, the purpose of having that in place is to prevent town employees from using their position to gain favor, favor for permits and things like that, and make money off of what the town is doing.
Exactly. So if you read the statute, it says, in the statute, this is how it's done openly, so that you can, you file with the town clerk, and this is, it's not behind the back. What you guys actually did was, you guys tried to circle around. I mean, I talked to Jim, I appreciate all the work you did on this, Jim, but you guys were like, well, if we can do this and do this, we can get around it. I don't wanna get around it. I'd like to, I wanna be upfront and honest. And so, you guys are making a choice. You made a, you made a comment the other day that we profited and we have a, off our position. Rich, do you think I profited from my positions here?
Did I make that comment?
No, I'm asking you if you do think I do. I mean, the board voted on it, so I'm asking you.
Profited from what, from conservation?
Yeah, yeah, any of my, any of my positions here.
No.
No.
Well, I, you know, I don't know.
I mean, you know the amount of hours we spent on conservation.
Yeah.
Joyce and I do it, I mean, there was no profit. Matter of fact, I've sat out from anything. I've never, actually, I talked to Joyce the other day. I said, look, it looks like I might have to resign. And she said, were you given a reason? I said, well, they said because I profited, and I have a, I have inside information or something. And I, she said, well, you've never even taken a job in town since you've been on conservation. You've sustained from everything. So, you know, I've never caught profit. As a matter of fact, it's cost me a lot of money to work for this town. I volunteered on, I mean, for Lucy Stone, I volunteered my equipment. We moved big trucks, we moved the bases, I supplied wood chips. Lucy Stone had a, a sign made across the street, cost, I don't know, a couple thousand dollars. I built a post and beam sign and closed kiosks, all free, all materials, labor and everything, installed it. Done all the work on the common downtown for, I hired my guys to do it for no cost to the town. Everything I've done has cost me money. There's never been a profit. And for you to say that I've profited from this town, and, 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 but you can't show it, I, I take that very seriously.
We don't know. That's the purpose of doing this.
You made a comment that I have. It's on tape.
I, I don't remember.
Well, it is on tape, but would you like to resign, retract it? I asked you last time, you said no.
I don't know if you've.
You've made an accusation that I, that I profited somehow.
This stems from you wanting to be a, um, uh, be a consultant for a project that was before the planning board.
We were not a consultant, and we, and that was brought up. We were merely helping. As a matter of fact, it came up that Derek did violate the ethics law, under that same law, because he drew a set of plans, which is illegal under that act. If you read the thing the town council sent you, the one I was reading here, it was violation of the ethics laws. And Derek's immediate, he's not here to defend himself, but his immediate response was, look at the tape. I was only trying to help the guy out. I never said he was doing anything malicious. He didn't know, but he did violate the ethics laws. We were just trying to help Mike out and help the planning board out, help the guy get a permit, because this thing's been screwed up for months and months and months. We weren't, we weren't, as a consulting company, we're just helping out a friend.
You guys identified that you were consulting for him.
We, we were offering him advice to help him get his permit. We put together a package, everything that you guys required. That's what we did. We weren't a consulting company. We're two people that are friends of ours, and we volunteered to help him and help you guys get this thing put through your, your board. You guys asked for an awful lot of stuff from residents, and, 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 and the planning board actually acknowledged that the town had made a lot, had made mistakes in the way this was, was brought forth. It was brought under the wrong section. There was, it was a lot of problems with this thing. We were trying to put it all together so everybody could get this thing off the table. This guy's trying to just bring tax base to the town. We weren't doing anything underhanded, unethical. We were doing the same thing that Derek did, helping a guy out. Period. There's no, there's no exchange of money. There was nothing. And then, I gotta, I gotta renew my own pit, and now I can't renew it. So you guys are making me decide whether you wanna volunteer for this town, and I've sacrificed for years. Jimmy, I was one of the first cert members. I was the first certified cert member. Years I've sacrificed for this town. You know, they'd say sacrificing, volunteering is a thankless job for the public, and everybody understands that, but when you guys kick me in the teeth over this, this is, this is very upsetting. Very upsetting.
Yeah, we would love to see you volunteering.
Here's the problem. You know, you, you say to me, we don't, it's a slippery slope. It's no more slippery than you guys being selectmen and planning board. When it comes to lawsuits, being represented by the town, you guys make a decision whether the town represents you, or, or you have to represent yourself personally. That's a serious.
So we, we got opinion with that for, um.
It doesn't matter what your opinions are. You guys are making this decision on yourselves. You know what I mean? It's, it, on the optics of it, is what you claim. For me, the optics are bad.
Can I, can I speak now?
Sure, can.
Thank you. Um, so, with regards to that, we did bring that forward to Ethics to see if we could do that. And Ethics has said, yes, we can do that, because they're elected positions. They're two elected positions, and it can be done.
But the optics of it, which is what you're claiming against me, is you guys are voting on your own self, whether you're gonna represent yourself or the town's gonna represent you. You know what I mean? That's, the optics aren't good. And, and here I am, I've done nothing wrong. I'm just trying to help out the town. And for that, we have to give up Veterans Council, we have to let something we've built for a long time go down the tubes, and all this stuff.
And again, that, that's up to you.
And no, it's up to, no, it's not up to me, it's up to you. You guys, you guys have made this decision.
So Rich.
You have the ability to say, you can stay and volunteer, or you can make a living. You've decided to say, I have, I have to make a living.
Rich, that's ultimately your choice and what you wanna do. We've already voted on this, and we've already decided not to make any of those boards special municipal employees.
Yeah, well, then in the next meeting, we'll be, when will the next meeting be in?
The seventeenth.
Okay, like, be on the agenda.
For what?
To attend to my resignations.
Okay, just give it to him in writing and.
No, I, I'll be, I'm gonna do it at the meetings.
Oh, is it?
Twenty-first.
That was the seventeenth.
Of select board?
Oh, no.
Select board. It was the twenty-first.
Twenty-first? It's a Friday.
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday.
Twentieth?
Twentieth, sorry.
Sorry, it's not the seventeenth. Today's the fifteenth. So it'd be the twentieth.
No, I thought we were taking, are we taking the twentieth off?
Yes.
So then it's not till August third?
August third.
It'd be the twenty, what about the twenty-seventh of July?
No, because everybody's gone, so. The next one would be, with August third then.
Yeah.
Alright. So August third would be the next.
It'll be on the agenda?
Yep, yep. It's just added to the agenda.
Exactly, you would be on the agenda. Rebecca would like to be on the agenda as well.
That's fine.
I would like to, as co-chair, the, I've been on the Veterans Council for twenty, since twenty sixteen, and, and co-chair with Rich for a number of years, and, um, I, I'm just very disappointed. David, you yourself have sat there how, how many times, and congratulated us and praised us for the work that we did on behalf of veterans. And it's really disheartening to see this happen. Um, it, nobody's knocking down the doors here to volunteer. And the amount of time, with shopping, and cooking, and running around, and organizing, and this is the thanks that we get, it's pretty sad.
So, so again, you guys are putting this on us. This, this is your decision.
You have, you have, David, you have the decision.
You have the power to let this happen.
You have the decision.
We're not consulting. Mr. Samick, good an attorney.
This is not an underhanded thing.
Because of one person on the Board of Health, and we know who she is, and I'm not gonna violate open meeting law because I'm not mentioning names, but we all know, Mr. Iharker, you said it. Mr. Farber, you said it yourself, who the problem was. And that's how this whole thing stemmed.
But Becky, why would you resign then?
You don't need to resign. You have no conflict. Why are you?
She does. She can't help.
Out of protest?
No, she, she was helping Mike, and you made her resign too.
You're not helping Mike anymore.
How do you know?
But, he's got an attorney.
It doesn't matter. She can't even talk to him about it.
But the fact of the matter is.
She, she can't represent them and be a consultant.
She can't even talk to him about it. You represent, you, you, when you talk to him, you understand how it works?
Anybody could talk to him about his project.
Not if you're, no, you can't. You can have ten consultants. You can have twenty consultants. One person speaks, you can have twenty, a team of twenty. It's all a violation. I, I don't think you guys grasp what this law works. I, I know you don't grasp basic corporation stuff, because none of you understood that part of it.
But I, I just think it's a shame that you have somebody here who, her, all of us here were born and raised in this town. Mr. Conrad was two, Jimmy two. Born and raised in this town, and we have a, a far more invested interest than any of you, any of you. This is our, our town, and this is.
It's our town, too.
This, but, this is the thanks that we get, David. You're a, you're a Marine.
Nobody, nobody is making you resign, okay?
But, so why do you understand?
You either volunteer, or you don't make a living.
Rich, Rich is different. Rich has a special permit, and it becomes a conflict there.
No, no, because we're doing this together. We, we do Veterans Council.
Are you on a special permit with him?
No, no, no. Veterans Council together.
Okay, well, you can stay on Veterans Council. I don't see any.
But he can't.
So.
Well, how is she supposed to do it alone?
Leaving, do you have to leave?
But, but he can't stay on Veterans Council unless you deem us special municipal employees, David.
Okay, but again, why do you have to leave if he's?
Because she can't handle a wall.
We can get other people. We'll find people.
They're banging down the door to volunteer, aren't they? Well, let me say.
That's why you're, the three of you are on planning board, because there's so many volunteers.
So, but listen, at the last meeting, seventy-five hundred dollars out of our pocket for the, during the last six months. Yes, we got reimbursed. Another two hundred for the hot dogs that you came and enjoyed, both of you, at the last concert. We love doing that.
Yes.
And you didn't even give us fifteen dollars for a reason, being a Marine. Shame on you.
So I did try giving you money, and you wouldn't take it?
No, we couldn't take cash. We said, there was a way to do it and a process. We are, we are above and beyond reproach. We don't do things unethically. Period.
But, but it's really a shame, especially for Veterans Council. This is no way to treat a veteran, David.
Again, you don't need to resign.
You don't know what you're talking about, David.
Wait, there's no conflict for you. Okay, you're not representing Mr. Samick anymore, correct?
Nope, she never was.
Okay, so what's the conflict then?
Because I'm not doing Veterans Council alone without Rich. You know, we're, we, we do this together.
Okay, somebody else will step up and help out. We'll get somebody else to help you. We'll get it out there. Some, somebody will come, step up and wanna help. Okay? Um, you, you guys have done an amazing job of that, but again.
David, and I just said this, save it. Put, put it, put it on the, put it on the news now. Veterans Council is looking for new, there'll be no more Veterans Council. Veterans Council is looking for new volunteers. See, David. Veterans, any problems, call David. Thank you.
Sorry.
It, it's really, it really is a shame and, and a huge insult. And, and Mr. Iharker, what's your position?
I will not appoint all those people as special town employees.
You don't appoint people, you appoint the position.
You appoint the chair, the one position, you don't have.
No, 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 no. You point the entire board.
It's not individual names.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
You appoint the board.
Jim, could you please explain to him?
You would appoint the positions.
You appoint the chair. You appoint the position, you appoint, you, you appoint the chair.
Oh, for God's sake.
You don't appoint the entire board. You appoint, you, you appoint the chair.
No, you don't.
It's the entire committee.
It's the entire committee.
It's everybody. Position.
It's the position.
It's a position.
Those are people.
You don't do Joyce Iharker, you don't do Richard Demetrius, you don't do Autumn.
No, but those are people filling those positions.
But it's the position.
How many of those people?
It doesn't matter. How many people, okay, so we have four on conservation.
How many of these people have come to?
How many are on veterans?
How many? Four.
So he's a double, so.
So now you're eight. And how many on cert?
Talk about, to, uh, to about a dozen. But I also have cert leaders, which he is a cert leader, a cert E, you know, so.
So now, twenty people are gonna be special town employees.
And what's the harm?
Well, how many of those people, they all register with a town clerk. How many of those people have, if they wanna come to get a special permit, is there something wrong with getting a special permit? It's, the only thing it allows them to do is get a special permit. It doesn't give them anything special. It allows them to get a special permit in town. That's all it does. It doesn't give you any rights.
And for Mr. Valise to, to say at a prior meeting that we have the inside track, the only inside track we had is we read the damn bylaw, which would probably be in the building inspector's best interest to try. That was our only inside track.
What other benefit do you have besides getting a special permit? What, what, what else does it allow anybody to do? And is it, is it wrong to get a special permit?
So, a- again, we voted on this. The speci- special municipal employee status is not gonna be granted to any of those boards. Okay? What you want, what you decide to do from there is up to you. You're adults. You can make your decisions. Mr. Sarah, again, we don't see a conflict because you're not representing Mr. Samick, and you're not profiting by a special permit. You're not, you're not getting anything outside of this. There's no business or that you're conducting, other than volunteering for the town. You've been amazing. You know we love you, and you know we want you to continue with this, okay? And, and again, Mr. Demetrius, you know, we, we have nothing but respect for you on that also. We'd love to see you continue. But again, the conflicts have to be resolved, because we're not gonna.
If you have so much respect, I would appreciate an apology saying I profited from my position.
I don't know if you have.
Then why did you say it?
I said, I don't, I don't know if you have.
We'll review the day.
Okay, if you're consulting.
We'll review the day.
If you're consulting, i- it would make sense that you're being paid for that. Okay, if you're, if you're a consultant with a consultant company, okay? So that, that's what you said, you were a consulting company.
I didn't say, where, where do we say we're a consulting company?
In the planning board.
David.
In the planning board meeting, you said you were a consultant.
David.
We will hold a tape.
David, and, and Rich, would you guys consider reconsider at least doing Veterans Council?
No, you, no, because Rich is on three boards.
I can resign from the others.
You can resign from the others, and?
And then, and then circuits hung up, I'm trying.
No, I think we've, we've talked about this, and we're not comfortable with doing that for employees. So.
One other thing I wanna add, in other towns, cert teams have become special employees.
Cause other towns.
I just wanna mention how.
Adam, are there anybody in the fire department special municipal employees?
It comes to my knowledge, no.
There should be.
There should be. How's work being done on this equipment?
That's job related.
It's not job related, it's outside work.
I'm pleased, why are you pleased?
So, so, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go down that road, because, again, they're town employees, they're full-time employees doing their job within the performance of their job.
No, they're not, no, they're not.
Okay, it's different.
No, they're not.
No, it's not different.
You, you have a business.
There are two businesses that are doing business with the Warren Fire Department.
Okay.
And I hate to say, anything of, because they're, they're family. But it's going on.
Okay, so. Yeah, we'll look into that.
And you gotta name them special employees, or they got to resign from the fire department.
We'll look into it, and address it.
Well, I hope you don't have discriminatory policies here.
Don't be shy.
What, what do you talk about discriminatory policies?
Pick and choose who gets special municipal employees and doesn't.
Okay, uh, are you all done now?
Yep.
Cause we're gonna move on. Thank you. Okay, moving on, so.
Go back up to.
Yeah, we'll go back up now. All right, so, fire chief monthly report, chief, you're up.
Thank you, good evening, everybody, Admiral Lloyd Fire Chief. Who's the best man in the house, I'm gonna stay here after this. Uh, Fire Chief, monthly report for June, uh, fire department responded to thirty-four calls in June, uh, they ranged in variety from motor vehicle accidents, three, those, uh, medical assists, three, structure fires, three, uh, cancer involving relative, four, activated alarms, eleven, power line incidents, five, electrical equipment, one, mutual aid, one, service call, two, oil burner issues, one call. Uh, Warren responded to fifty-eight, or Warren EMS responded to fifty-eight calls in June in two thousand twenty-three, and twenty-three ALS encounters were required. We did, uh, four smoke inspections, two liquid propane tank inspections, uh, in terms of our activity in meetings, uh, Warren Fire personnel trained on hose line operations and foam usage, as well as held our annual, uh, once a year, we do a cookout, kinda just to get together generally, for everybody to, just, uh, you know, just have, have a nice evening together. Uh, we did that at Station A. Uh, Warren EMS held our required annual class on physical restraint training, as well as excited, what we call excited delirium, uh, as well as dealing with mental health emergencies, which has become, uh, a huge part of what we do now, uh, so we have required trainings every year to make sure that our employees are trained, uh, how to properly and safely restrain people that might be a danger to themselves or others, uh, without causing a harm to them, uh, as well as dealing with mental and emotional calls in general, which is, uh, you know, something that I, I think law enforcement, uh, fire departments are doing more often than not now. Uh, in terms of our budget, I have continued to watch FY twenty-three budget closely as we draw to a close, uh, we requested a line item transfer, uh, uh, from finance in the select in, in July to cover, oh, I'm sorry, this is what I was doing earlier, uh, we did request a line item transfer for, uh, money into our ALS account, uh, which I just did, it was approved by finance to be able to be coming down here to, to you, but that should be the last issue that we had, that's a line item that historically, uh, we have had to ask for some transfers at the end of the year, every once in a while, it's something that's out of my control, I have no, uh, control over that line item, in the sense that it all depends on our call volume, and it all depends on the severity of the calls, so, there's really no rhyme or reason to it, we try to stay budgeted appropriate for it, I did add ten thousand dollars to the FY twenty-four budget, so hopefully that stays right in line, but from time to time, we have to do a transfer of that, but it's not something that was under budgeted, or anything like that, or, or, you know, there was a mistake made, it's just based on what our call volumes and, and what the severity of the calls. That's what I have for this evening.
Cool, all right, do you have any questions?
No.
Radio status?
Radio status, things are still good, we are looking, uh, really good, that, that, uh, other, other entity, uh, has continued to keep that frequency off, we've experienced no issues there, so, uh, we're, we're, we're happy, everything's working as it should happen, uh, it should work, and I've been listening intently on many different scenarios, as they go to different places, as we go to different places, and, you know, if there's a place we haven't been before, where the new system has, is trying it for the first time, and we're kinda making some mental notes that, hey, we got a little scratchy over here, hey, a little bit, and, cause we can, they can remotely adjust pa- uh, power to the towers, and they can kinda, they're, we're still in that fine tuning thing, where everything's working great, but where you can make those small little changes, we are gonna be probably adding some receivers to our station, which will help us, as I mentioned last meeting, it'll help us cover the downtown area a little bit better, uh, not in terms of, uh, we're getting good coverage down there, but inside buildings, it'll give us a little bit more strength, uh, inside some of the buildings in the downtown area, uh, due to their construction and stuff, so that is something that, uh, uh, we're, we're still working on, uh, with the same company to use for the project, to do a little more fine tuning. But it's, uh, not asking for any more money, it's all money that's been budgeted for the project already.
Very good. Yeah, I was in Belcher Town today, in, in the center of Belcher Town, and I could hear police, clear as day, in Belcher Town.
I've had, I've had people call me up and say they were almost, uh, uh, past four ninety-five, they had a cape, and they're hearing this, so.
Yeah, we were in Western Mass, we could hear.
Yeah, like, like I said, for years and years, that was one of our biggest shortcomings, was our radio system, it was just a very antiquated system, it was dangerous, and I mean, how many times we've been up in the Mass Pike, and just, I mean, it's amazing to stand in the middle of the Mass Pike and talk on a portable radio for the first time in my, in my career here, and that's, that's a good, that's a good feeling, I mean, I can stand in my own living room and talk like this with no problem at all, and they can hear me clear as day, and that's something we could never, knew, never knew before.
We used to be, it was not the only.
Yeah, I mean, and, and for them, I mean, I, I know for a fact, you know, I mean, there were some very serious calls, that, that if it had gone a different way, it would have put the town in a very tough situation for officer safety on some domestics and other things like that, that they could never get out before, in fact, you know, I remember two of them distinctly, that, you know, I heard it, and no one else did, and, you know, I immediately called them, and, you know, to, to, to make sure they're, they're, and that was, that was what we had to live with, you know, we were like that for, for years, and, you know, then you add the, you know, the, the fact that we didn't know this other frequency was bombarding us the whole time, and now we finally did that, and, you know, honestly, kudos to the, the people that we contracted with for this project, they've been great throughout it, uh, modular communications, I can't say enough about, uh, the, the work they've done on this, and just recently dealing with this problem, you know, usually when you contact a federal agency, it's like, you know, pulling teeth to get them to jump on something, but, uh, you know, this is the first time I've ever had to have extended, extensive dealings with the FCC, but we got them involved, within forty-five minutes, we had a phone call back from an FCC representative, within an hour and a half, he was on his way out to get a vehicle to start the search, so, you know, they, they jumped on it immediately, and it was a pleasure working with them, and if it wasn't for that gentleman, I mean, within two days, he could point at the source, and was able to s- make initial contact, and work, uh, amongst all parties to figure out to, to get to where we are today, and, and get our system back where it should be, so, uh, you know, it was actually a very pleasant experience dealing with that with the FCC, and I did not expect that.
Very good. All right, did you have anything else to add, chief?
No.
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, so, now on to police chief report. Chief.
Police Chief Joe Mallett, how are you doing tonight?
Good, you?
Uh, for the month of June, we had one thousand five hundred sixty-nine calls logged with seventeen N and rest, uh, eighty-eight incident reports generated, uh, hundred and twenty-three motor vehicle stops, and thirty-seven motor vehicle citations. Uh, our mo- our vehicles, uh, you can see from the mileage, are doing very well, except for the one that, what we'll probably talk about later in the year, it's, uh, at a hundred and one thousand miles. And also this month, obviously, we, uh, we all attended the graduation for the class of twenty twenty-three, and, uh, quite luck, uh, number five, uh, myself and members of the school commit, uh, school safety committee, we met at Westport Field Elementary School, we toured the school, and we did our own safety assessment with the guidance of the Homeland Security John, and, uh, he, he helped us, uh, write our own assessment. On the seventh, obviously, we just talked about the radio system, the new radio system was up and running, uh, the eighth, a new full-timer Charlie Williams started. Uh, on the fifteenth, Officer Cody and I, we traveled to Cambridge, and we were able to secure ten, pretty much brand-new office chairs, um, they're valued around seven hundred dollars, we got them for nothing. Uh, I thank Officer Cody for that, he's always on top of looking to see what federal agencies, uh, agencies are getting rid of stuff, and we're trying to pounce on the good stuff, but if you notice, um, we were able to change our conference room into a training room, uh, we were able to get.
Looks good, it looks.
Yeah, it does, it came out nice.
Yeah.
Um, that, we got an auction that the, the feds were getting rid of, it cost me fifty bucks for twelve tables.
Fifty bucks?
Fifty bucks, and I was able, then I got another auction, it was from a housing unit down in Connecticut, it was the, uh, projector. So, that, that cost us a hundred dollars, but it was a seven hundred dollar projector we got for a hundred bucks. So we were able to, to set up, and it came with a screen and everything else, so now we can have trains in there, came out, came out really nice. Uh, let's see, on the twenty-second, we, um, Chief of Lloyd, Town Commissioner Farar, and myself, Jimmy King, and, um, members of Board of Health, we attended that, um, nima tape talk at Spencer Town Hall, uh, we simulated a category three hurricane, and also on the twenty-second, the start of our server fiber wall installation started, that'll probably take a few weeks to complete, um, to slowly integrate all the old into the new, um, so there's no issues, so that'll take, um, I think it's about four weeks to complete, fully complete. And twenty-seventh, um, we met with the, to review the RFPs, which we already put in front of you.
Yep.
So that's on our to June.
Very good, busy month. Did you have any questions?
I do not.
We already got the response about the radios, and. Milo, how's that going?
Good, uh, Charlie's actually an instructor, so, I'm bringing him up here with Officer Bouchard, uh, so they can start learning how to run the system.
Very good.
And we're hopefully gonna start making our own those scenarios, Officer Bouchard's very good with computers and electronics and stuff, so.
I, I hear that, um, you know, Lieutenant Early's a pretty good actor, stunt double.
Yes, he was. Yes, he is.
All right. Yeah, that's all I have, yeah, thank you very much.
You got it, thank you.
All right, we covered that, we covered that.
Number five.
Hmm? There's no five?
No, I said you're on five.
Yeah, yeah. No, I was just going down the list again. Okay, number five, review a letter that was sent to the town by the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, Department of Labor standards, and possible vote to approve the town, town's response of said letter. Okay, Mr. Farar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, um, as I have briefed the board, uh, in the past, um, on May ninth, uh, the Department of, uh, Labor, um, had, uh, came in and did an inspection, uh, of the, uh, town hall and police station. Their, uh, inspection, uh, is, is a, led to a letter that was sent to us on June twenty-sixth, uh, with some orders of corrections, um, and we have been diligently working on those matters, um, since that inspection. I have some final pictures that I would like to show, um.
Yep.
The, um, the committee, the board, um, addressing some of the issues that were written, um, within, um, this letter. So, uh, with the exit signs, um, that was noted in the letter, um, there was no illuminated, um, exit signs, um, on the doors, so, um, we had a, uh, a electrician go through, um, update the, um, exit signs, cleared some additional, uh, access to the doors, around the doors clutter, um, and, and installed those exit signs as requested per, uh, the, per the Department of Labor. So they are all in working condition, they're all ready, um, uh, they have been inspected by fire services, um, and they are ready to go. We've also, um, uh, contracted with fire services for an annual inspection, which was never done before, so they're going to be inspecting the, uh, illuminated exit signs on a yearly basis, as well as the, uh, fire alarm system, uh, within, uh, the police station. The fire alarm system was never tested in quite a bit of time, uh, they came out, they tested it, it passed, with the exception of the battery backups, the battery backups, uh, have been, um, replaced, new batteries are in there, uh, there's a bill tonight for ninety-eight dollars in your packets for the, for the batteries. So, their, fire services group, uh, is gonna be coming on a yearly basis to do these inspections, we will be getting a report every year, um, we will also put that, as well as a copy of that, with the response that we're gonna be sending out to, um, the Department of Labor. Rich, if you wanna go on to the next, uh, slide right there, um, so, another, uh, aspect of the letter was the, um, abundance of, of plugs, um, that were being used, and the lack thereof of receptacles. So, we were able to, again, work with the electrician to add receptacles, get rid of, uh, surge protectors, power strips, um, and, and, and go right into a straight plug-in. If you go into one of the slides, the pictures before that, Rich, um, you'll notice, right there, if you, if you could zoom in on that one, Rich? Thank you, in the top right-hand corner, there's a, a, a video camera right there, um, that was, uh, operated through a, um, a cord that would come down the side of the wall, and be plugged into a surge protector on the floor. So, now it's a direct tie-in to a, a receptacle, um, right there, so, again, making as max, as many direct tie-ins as we can, it's an old building, uh, the wiring is, is, is tough to wire, uh, and to make it as, as straight as possible, because you'd be running all of these, um, you know, conduits and, and, and piping, um, to get wiring to there, so we did it as, as best as we could to get that, that done, but it's a direct connection right into there, um, for that camera. Next slide, Rich?
Oh, that's an exit sign.
That's an exit sign, uh, you wanna blow that one up too, Rich, I'll, I'll mention this as we're, we're here too, that door was recently replaced, uh, that's a door that was re- literally coming off the hinges, um, for entering, uh, into the new conference room that the chief has put together, um, that's a whole new door, uh, that was recently installed two weeks ago, uh, we're going to get it painted with, um, you know, polyurethane, um.
Solid door?
Solid door, solid door, a secure door, solid door, so that, that wasn't noted in the report, but that was something that needed to be fixed. Okay, so if you look at slide, um, in your packet, slide four on, uh, page six, okay? There has to be a, 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 um.
Photo four, right?
Yeah, photo four, yeah, page six. Um, there has to be a certain length of the railing that would come down to the last step, okay? This meets the requirements, as you notice in this photo, the, uh, in the correction order photo, the, uh, the railing doesn't come all the way down to the last step, this one, it does, uh, and there was also a question of the height, uh, requirement, and, and now it meets that standard. Next photo.
So, wait, in photo four, it should've gone up to the top of the tape measure, is that what that's trying to show?
It should've went down further to complete the last step.
It's short, like, two inches?
Oh, it's not the height, it's the length. Oh, it's not the height, it's the length.
The length?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
In the height, right?
Well, it had to be lowered.
Yeah.
Had to be lowered.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and that's a whole new railing. This, this step right here was in, on page three, photo one. Town was cited for that hairline crack that is in, um, photo one of page three. If you can see it, it's, it's all the way to the left.
Yeah.
That's a brand new, entire new step, um, that was put in, um, to take care of that.
We didn't get fined?
No, no.
We got no fines on a?
No fines.
These are just all written warnings?
Written warnings.
First warning?
Correct.
So?
Correct.
If we didn't fix them, we'd get fined?
Correct, correct. So, uh, next slide, Rich? Again, that's just a, another picture, that step. Okay, so, as you can see in, in, in page four, photos two and three, because of the, uh, the, um, the length of the span of the steps, which is forty-five inches, it requires, under code, two railings. And the railing, the new railing would have to be contiguous. The, uh, the original railing is non-contiguous. However, it was pre-existing. So what we were able to do is put a contiguous rail all the way up the side to meet with the code as it, we were supposed to do in, uh, page four. So this, in page four, photo two, you'll see that the rail, they have a, a bar there. They wanted a rail there. There's a rail now there. Again, uh, they're, they're making in photo three, a, 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 a distinction. There's a, there's a, um, the length of the steps is forty-five inches, and they want a rail on the side. So that rail is now contiguous all the way up. Okay.
So I have a question. Is this the same as that? Is this the red, the new red stair?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause this one doesn't show the railing, so it's a little out of context.
Right, right. It just shows the step down.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So, uh, that, again, will show you the top of the steps, okay? The, that contiguous rail goes all the way up to the top, as it should. Okay, so, um, now this is, we weren't, uh, there was no correction order on this, but I felt that it was, it was important to be done. During a, uh, an electrical inspection, um, uh, it was noted that the service that was being provided, uh, to the building was an old, uh, Pacific service. Um, and those services have historically, uh, been prone to fires. Uh, and so they've recommended that it be replaced. So a whole new system is now in there, a whole new box, um, has been put in, um, and everything now is, i- is connected to the generator. Only maybe ten percent of the building before, one office, uh, was connected to the generator. Now, the entire operation of the police station is connected to the generator. We had the capacity to do it. For some reason, it was never connected, and the town never.
So we're just talking about just the police department section, not the upstairs or anything like that?
Correct.
That is not on the generator?
I think the whole building is, though.
It, it, it may. The whole building?
I believe so. I think the panels that he replaced right there, that's, that's for the whole building.
He was gonna, he was gonna try to get the entire, uh, building, but focus in on the police station. Because nobody else occupies the rest of the building.
There's nothing else really running.
Right.
Stairs.
All right.
So the.
Well, it looks good. Looks a lot better than the, the rat's nest that was down there.
So it's, it's all been replaced. Um, next slide, Rich? Okay. This, again, this was, this wasn't cited. Uh, this was, we were down there just this afternoon, uh, myself and the chief. Uh, we have now a dehumidifier down there. There was a dehumidifier there before. It wasn't a commercial grade. Now there's a commercial grade dehumidifier. Uh, it's going to be hooked up there where we gotta get a, a, a longer cord uh, for it, um, for, um, for it to be connected. Uh, but that's going to replace the, um, the, the smaller dehumidifier there. We're gonna take that smaller dehumidifier and put it into the, um, other room off to the side that's not even being used to try to bring down some of the moisture, um, uh, in, in the other room.
Okay.
So, uh, if you wanna, um, this is, uh, was mentioned, uh, by the, uh, inspector, uh, from the Department of Labor. Uh, I should've taken a picture prior to this. But this picture, um, is one in which there was a, this, this, this connection is, uh, plugged into our sub-pump that is right by the, um, the furnace.
Mm-hmm.
Pre- previous to this, it was, um, a, uh, a surge, a strip, a surge protector that was plugged into that, that was plugged, and then the, 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 um, the, uh, the, uh, extension cord was then plugged into the surge protector. The, the inspector says have it, it's better to have it directly connected into there. That, that, that service can handle it. There's no problems. They want it directly connected. So we were able to, um, fix that receptacle and directly connect it right into there. Getting rid of, again, um, you know, extension cords. This slide represents, um, photo six and page seven of the report. So if you notice, in, in, and it's tough to see in these black and white photos, but, um, there was an addition.
It's photo five, right?
Photos five and six.
Oh, five and six.
Yeah. So if you notice in photo six, there was an extension cord that's wrapped up that was going through the, the, uh, the ceiling into, uh, the, um, upstairs room of the PD. That, that extension cord, again, is gone. Um, it's not, it's not operating any of the systems now. Uh, again, getting rid of some of the excess stuff, um, there.
Wait a minute. So there was an extension cord that was plugged into the basement and it went up through the floor?
Yes. Yes.
There was no outlets over there. And actually, that outlet in the basement was wrong off the generator. So if we lost power, they had at least one computer to do both of those stuff.
Ah, okay, that's, yeah, all right.
Pretty sad.
So we got away from that.
Creative electrical work, huh?
I, I gotta say, you know, what was there, two fires down there over the years?
At least, yeah. It's all charred.
Yeah, it's all, you know, we seen all the charred beams. I wonder why?
Yeah.
You know, you have to see in all the, well, it's good we getting these things fixed, though.
So, again, in, uh, this slide, this was filled with, um, cords, old wiring. I had the electrician clean it up. Um, it's now, uh, totally clean. Um, we were cited in that as well. Uh, that's actually photo five, um, in, in page seven. Um, so, uh, that has been taken care of as well.
Okay.
There's another slide, Rich, or is that it?
There might be a. Yep, that's it.
That's it. Okay, so those were the items in which, uh, they were concerned about. They have been fixed, repaired. Um, those are the respa- we're gonna, obviously, we have the pictures. We're gonna put them into a letter and send a response to them. We have until July twenty-eighth to get the letter to them. Um, I was on the phone, I had a phone call with, uh, Inspector McKeel this afternoon. He's, you know, he saw preliminarily the pictures. He was very excited, and he was thankful that the town took it very seriously and that we're going to have this, um, you know, addressed, um, moving forward. Um, another matter that was brought into, um, this report, um, in which we're going, which we, which we have addressed, and I actually.
MSDA sheets and the chemicals?
Correct.
Yep.
So.
You're gonna need an industrial hygienist?
So, um.
So what is this?
So.
Because any chemicals stored in the buildings, they need to be li- properly labeled, stored in a proper container, in a proper cabinet. Um, you can't have certain chemicals stored together. And everything should be, have, um, safety data sheets in a book where employees have access to those to see what chemicals in there. And after they identify if they're carcinogens, teratogens, or fire hazards.
This is chemicals that are used currently, or this is stuff that was left over from previous occupation?
No. Current, currently.
Oh, okay. So it's stuff the police.
Like Windex?
Yes. If, if you have any household chemicals, and they don't have a label on it, and you can't identify what it is,
Okay.
you, you can get fined for that, in, in a public building. Uh, but yes, you need to have them clearly labeled, and they should be stored in a, a proper cont- container. If, if there's a risk of a fire hazard, then they have to be in a fire-safe container, um, stored somewhere.
Why would a, the Windex didn't have a?
Windex has a little, the sticker that you showed us on.
Yeah, they, there's an ocean label, ocean label on the, the Windex.
Tells you what lot number, what, what number.
So we have Windex. So you have to get the, the safety data sheet for.
Yeah. And that's easy enough to do. You can go on and print up the safety data sheets. You just gotta put them in a book. Um, but I would recommend, you know, getting with the Board of Health. Maybe they have an industrial hygienist that can go through and look at it and look at the stuff, unless you already looked at a, a way of fixing it.
Well, um, I, I, I kinda drafted a, a written, uh, hazardous communication program. I took a, a template, uh, from the state, and I drafted it, and I, I, I contacted Jeremy Olson, uh, on our highway. Um, he, um, you know, this was, you know, when we were first inspected of this. He had some older files there that had some information in it, but he wasn't sure what type of order they were in. So he had, he wanted to take the last month or so to, to go through them, which he did, and he brought them today. Um, and they're, they're pretty much in order now. Um, and he's kind of categorized all of the, um, hazardous, uh, chemicals here. Um, and if he's got sa- safety, uh, data sheets on it, and he says that he has them all on these things, and some of these things that, you know, we use here, uh, Purell, ant sanitizer, Windex, uh, Flex Swipes, um, soft soap, uh, you know, so.
Whiteout?
Uh, uh, it doesn't say, it doesn't say whiteout, no. Um, but these are the.
The liquid, the liquid whiteout?
Yep.
Not the tape, though?
No.
I don't think we have any liquid in the building.
Um, so he has all of these, um, already done. So, uh, my thought process was that, you know, we start with this, we have this already done. Um, and, uh, he has designated, uh, Shelley as the person that has new products come in and new products and, and products leave, that she's gonna keep updating the labels and updating files over there for the town. Um, and so.
She's a safety officer for them?
Um, I think, uh, let's see who we had designated as the actual safety officer. Um, the safety officer is going to be Jeremy, but sh- this person, Shelley, is going to do the, um, the, 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 uh, the safety data sheets. Um, so, um, we have this preliminarily worked out. I'd like to work with, um, uh, Sewer, uh, to get, you know, some of their stuff, uh, organized as well.
They definitely should have all their stuff because they have bulk chemicals. So, and same thing with Water Department. Water Department, when we went in there, I'm pretty sure they had everything together. Because we went through and we toured, and they were showing us the books and stuff of everything, responses and, um, safety data sheets and stuff. So they, they're a good resource too, but, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that you wouldn't think that needs to be on there, but.
Right. So we have, we have that, and then, um, so we have a response. That will be our response for, for that portion of it. Um, and then finally, um, our personal protective equipment. Um, and a lot of that, again, will, will be dealt with, with, uh, Jeremy and Sewer. Um, some stuff over here, um, and that's, you know, PPE, um, for, you know, if you're using a chainsaw, do you have chaps? Do you have a hard helmet? Do you have, um, uh, ear blockers, eye protection? Those types of gloves, those types of things that, you know, if you're using that stuff, um, you know, we have to make sure that we have, uh, you know, all of those in inventory, enough for the people that will be using them. Um, and then, another thing is, is that it's critical on training. Um, not only for the Department of Labor, but also for our insurance carriers as well. Um, and trainings on, you know, operating heavy equipment, heavy machinery, uh, are critical to this whole process. So, um, you know, anytime that, uh, somebody, it's easy to get the documentation if an employee participates in a MIA training, because there's certificates that print out, there's attendance records there. It's all automated. But if Jeremy conducts an in-house training, or Jeremy brings somebody in, or if Ralph brings somebody in, um, or Ralph has an in, in, in-house training, uh, it needs to be, you know, documented, who attended, you know, and what the topics were, so that we have some type of, of backup information and documentation. Um, so, on that.
I, I, I'm gonna make a suggestion here because this, you, you opened up a can of worms, okay? And I wasn't thinking about it, but yes, we have a lot of hazardous materials within the town and the different departments and stuff like that. And there's different protocol, protocols that need to be identified and used for handling those and storing them and everything else. And something like this, it becomes way too much for somebody who is not trained into doing, doing those levels of operation. I, I would honestly recommend, we probably should get a consultant and have an industrial hygienist come in and do this. Because there might be chemicals that they're using that might require respirators, um, whether the different departments, um, Sewer Department or, um, over at, you know, the, the Highway Department, as, uh, Chief Lavoy will say, um, when you're dealing with resp- well, different chemicals, you might be required to have a respirator. You have to have special filters to handle those chemicals, so you have to have those on hand. And even to put a respirator on, you have to be fit-tested and trained on respirator sa- safety, and you have to be cleared by your doctor and have a pulmonary function test done prior to doing that. Because they may turn around and the doctor says, no, you don't have the lung capacity to operate safely under a full-face respirator. You might need a supply air respirator, okay? So there's all different things this thing can go into, and they would identify MSDA sheets. They would say, okay, your chemicals are being stored properly, or no, you have to put a fire-safe cabinet outside the building because you have fire chemicals that can potentially cause a fire risk. Um, and that's just way too much, um, for, for just an employee taking an online slide. Because literally, an industrial hygienist course is, I think it's three or four months just to get certified as an industrial hygienist. I, I got the, the HazWhopper, the forty-hour HazWhopper, so I can respond to hazardous waste inc- incidents. But that, that is a different, that's much higher level. Um, firefighters only get twenty-four hour?
Hazmat awareness, yeah.
So they get twenty-four hour, uh, for it. So it's a less thing. They, they don't clean up. They don't do that stuff. Um, but they wear the equipment, identify, and go into buildings, so. Um, but this, you're, you're getting into a lot.
Well, yeah.
It, 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 it can go wrong because if you're not properly trained, and you sign off on something, and the employee uses it, and thinks he's safe, and then all of a sudden he's using the, using the wrong filters, or, you know, where he's using maybe a half-face respirator when he's supposed to be wearing a full-face respirator doing something, um, or working with a chemical, or splash guards during certain things. And then they look at, uh, permissible exposure limits, the PELs. On how long you could be dealing with the, the, that specific chemical. So if you're dealing with a parts cleaner and you're working in front of that parts cleaner all day long without a respirator. And you're only supposed to be working on it with, with a respirator for four hours. And you were sitting there cleaning parts all day to, for equipment. You know, that, that's a no-no. So there's a lot that can get involved in it. And I would honestly recommend, i- it, it would just be the best interest and make us feel better. Where if we have a consultant come in and do it and look at it and they can set us on the right path. I just don't want you, without the training, saying, yeah, we're good on this. I think that's great.
Oh, no, I, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying that. Definitely not saying that. What I'm saying is I'm just trying to formulate a response by the twenty-eighth of July.
Yes.
So, uh, that's what I'm trying to do.
And with that, I think we could do simple things. We can print up, um, the safety data sheets, put them in a book where the employees can see it. Um, but you have to go through every single chemical that we have here in the building and look it up, including paint. Um, you know, there's certain things that if you have a lot of it, you can't store it in the building anymore. Now it, it bumps up because you're at a higher level. Um, little things you can store, but when you keep large sums of it, large amounts of it, now it's a different rating. And that is all an industrial hygienist's job is making sure all that stuff's done. Even like that, need a safety data sheet for it. Um, there's probably safety data sheets in the boxes. Because when they ship them, they put a safety data sheet in there. Um, and if not, you could just call the company because some, some things you're not going to be able to find on there because it's a proprietary thing. Um, we had the same problems with the, um, the solar panels. Because they wouldn't give us safety data sheets on them because even though they acknowledged there's chemicals in them. They're dry chemicals and yes, they have to ship them with safety data sheets. But they don't want to give them to us because we didn't, they didn't want us to know what was in them. So, um.
I think we might have changed the bylaw.
We did, to make sure that they have to have them.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, let's look into an industrial hygienist and say, yeah, we're properly labeling them. What we can get and we're in the process of hiring a consultant as an industrial hygienist.
So, yeah, I, I, I think that would be a great idea. Um, and we, we could have to get that addressed at, you know, the fall because we don't have the money to do it right now.
Yeah, but as long as we're addressing it, you know, um. You might be, we might be able to use ARPA for it. Because it's a health, health and safety type thing.
I'm not sure if we have enough in there, maybe.
Well, you can look at how much one's going to charge. Ask them, ask around and say, hey, I just wanted you to do this and this. Look around and consult for a day, you know, go to these offices. They, they might be able to do it for cheap. Don't know. You know, I don't know how much they make. So, probably not cheap though.
Probably not. So, um, that was all also mentioned in the report. So they, the.
Before we go forward with that, I would get with the Board of Health and see if they have somebody that.
Okay.
Maybe they already use. So maybe they have somebody that can come in and do it. Their resource.
No, sounds good. Um, there's a, uh, with the correction orders. So those were, those were also mentioned in there. Uh, the state has also provided templates for us to use, uh, to, uh, to draft a, a written hazardous communication program. Um, the state is really looking for communities to identify people who are going to be, you know, ones that are, are taking on these responsibilities. Um, you know, so, uh, but I was also very, um, uh, pleased with Jeremy. He had a huge binder, a huge couple file folders of all the information with all that, um, data sheets that he's collected. And all of the chemicals and, um, all of the, um, stuff that he has already accumulated. Um, in a very neatly and organized manner. So, kudos to Jeremy. Um, and so that will be the response that we will have to coordinate, um, and send out. You know, the pictures coupled with, you know, the responses of these other items. I can certainly inform them that we intend on hi- hiring and consulting a, you know, private hygienist to, um, to do that.
All right. You good with that?
Yeah.
What are your feelings about it?
I think everything you talked about was good. I'm supposed to make a motion to approve the town's response of said letter, but you have.
I don't have a letter.
No, we, we, I just wanted to talk about the response and try to get a feel as to where we are with it, um, you know.
So that'll be coming up?
That'll be coming up.
A letter, okay.
But you have to have the letter there before our next meeting.
Before.
So just send it to us individually to review. All right, I'm good. You good?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Conrad?
Uh, well, for thirty-seven years I handled chemicals and tire maintenance. And anytime I was training somebody, I would, uh, not only show them how to do it, but I'd follow them around for an entire shift. There's a lot of household chemicals we all use. Bleach, hydrogen peroxide, ammonia have to be used in a well-ventilated area. You wear gloves, you wear a face mask because you do not want to be splashed by these.
Nope.
They're all, I'm going to put it, they will break your skin. And you have to be so careful yet. You almost have to be over careful. If there's a, a data sheet on them, before you even handle the chemical, you have to read the data sheet. That's a requirement. And that was back fifteen years ago when I was training people.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Anybody else? Okay. All right, um, okay. Number six, discussion of possible vote on fiscal year twenty-twenty-three line item transfer request. Made by Sewer, Police, Fire, Health and Selectmen Departments.
These all require separate motions?
Correct. And FINCOM approved all these?
Um, I believe so. They, uh, they approved the one that I was at for the Selectmen.
They approved them all?
Yeah, I brought them all down.
I have them right here. Sewer.
Thank you, Chief. You get an A.
Police.
You do my first.
Fire, Portail, that's it. They are all for these numbers that are down there.
Okay, you ready?
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve a line item transfer for the Sewer Department. From supplies to services in the amount of ten thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to approve the following line item transfer from the Police Department. From purchase of services to maintenance and utilities for five, eight.
Two grand here.
Why do I only have one for five hundred? This is five hundred.
No, that's how much is in, they're asking for two thousand up at the top. This is how much is in their budget. They're asking for two thousand.
For two thousand dollars.
Okay, I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the following line item transfer for the Fire Department. Um, it's going to be.
Seven thousand.
And what's it coming from? Just some accounts into advanced life support.
It's up written on that one. They wrote it in.
Ambulance wages and ambulance.
Chief, can you explain it?
Yeah, so normally I put the, nor- normally I put both things on there, but because I had to take it from two line items, it wouldn't fit in the box. So I just used a, I, I knew they use the numbers most of the time, but so the first one is ambulance wages. And the second one is the ambulance hourly pay line item. So there are two EMS-related line items and the ALS is also ambulance-related, so I use those accounts. And doing it this way is better than asking for a RAP. So I was able to have a little bit of extra money in those two line items left over. So I asked for a line item transfer as opposed to a reserve account transfer. And this is that one I was talking about in my, um, my report that I just don't have control of. It's a, it's a ever-revolving, it all depends on the call volume and the severity of the calls.
Okay, so from those two accounts that the chief mentioned to advance life support for seven thousand dollars.
I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the following line item transfer for the Board of Health. From the rabies control account to the testing Cummins pod account for two hundred dollars.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to approve the following line item transfer from the Board of Selectmen. Um, from Selectmen Secretary to Computer Hardware slash Supplies in the amount of eleven hundred sixty dollars.
Okay, I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Need initials in the box.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of possible vote to authorize the town administrator to approve all expenditures in the Shepherd Building Office Senior Center Improvement Articles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, similar to what we had done last year. Um, the, um, the Shepherd in Building Improvement, um, line item, um, was about fifty thousand dollars. We did various projects throughout the building. Um, keeping with that, uh, I mean, keeping the projects moving going forward. You, uh, Board had given me the authority to approve and, and monitor those projects and to get those projects going. We have now thirty thousand dollars, uh, from an article, very similar to the same article that we had the last time. But now has it included the senior center as well. So, um, I'd like to see if the Board would entertain, uh, continuing on in the past.
Okay. So what are you exactly looking at approving, approving like for projects?
Well, I would bring the projects to the Board. Uh, but I would like to be able to get, uh, the votes and get things moving on the expenditures. And nothing, uh, could be expended without the Board moving forward.
Okay, yeah, because I, you know, not that I need to know every single thing that's going on, but I would like to know what you're looking at doing for projects and what, you know, I don't think, where, where the authority would extend where you just grab all the projects and say, okay, I'm going to approve those without letting us know.
No, no, I, I, I'm looking for the, uh, I think you, you guys had given, uh, the same authority the last time.
Yep.
For, for the fifty thousand. So if you want to continue on that same path, move projects forward, then, then that's fine.
I, I have no problem with that. I just want to know what you're going to do.
Oh, sure. I'll, I'll definitely keep the, the Board informed.
Mm-hmm.
You good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Do, do you have any comments on it?
No, no, I'm, he's going to run a bias, so.
Yeah, just make sure, yeah.
You know, he's, he did a good job last year of finding stuff and fixing it, so.
Yeah.
I can tell you one of the main projects, and I think, Mr. Chairman, we had discussed this already. Um, was the senior center with the exterior of the building. Um, uh, when we went down there for our visit recently, um, you know, it was brought up about, um, you know, the, the paint that is peeled away, gutters that are not working, um, are not connected. Um, so we were, you know, trying to see if we could get those, those projects addressed.
Yeah, and you're good with it? You just want to know what you're going to do?
Sure, I'll give it a quick.
So just let us know, hey, I got this project. Are you, you okay with I, I go forward with it? And let us know what your plan is, so. Okay, um, yeah, I'm good with it.
Motion?
Yeah.
All right, make a motion to approve the town administrator to approve all expenditures in the Shepherd Building. Um, slash office slash senior center improvement article budget.
Okay, I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Again, just reiterate, let us know what you're going to do with the money before you go and do it. So, even if it's just sending us an email.
Okay.
All right, so warrants and bills.
Make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-three warrants, number one eighteen, vendor, hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Number one nineteen, vendor, hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Number one twenty, payroll, three thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Make a motion to pay, oop.
No.
Stop.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-four warrants, payroll number two, forty-nine thousand five hundred twelve dollars and four cents. Vendor number two, twenty-three thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Number vendor, uh, vendor number three, two thousand dollars.
Okay, I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-three bills, Miracle Connell, five thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars. Northeast IT, seventeen hundred ninety-seven dollars. Fire Service Group, ninety-eight forty-four. C two MA Adams two, two thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-four bills, custom drug testing, one hundred. Modern Pest, one hundred. Warren Water District, one eighty-two seventy-five. Stericycle, one ten oh six. Comcast, one forty-three thirty-five. Phone cleaning, a thousand seventy-five. Kelco, one fifty-eight fifty. Tie and bond, twenty-seven hundred seventy-five dollars.
I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, so minutes. Uh, we can't vote on June twenty-second because Mr. Valise isn't here and Mr. I Harker wasn't here. So I can't approve them by myself.
No.
So we have to put those through our next meeting. All right? And the June twenty-ninth meeting.
So I'll make a motion to approve the June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes.
Okay, I second it. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Town Administrator report. Sir, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Um, today, um, was it, well, this week was a very busy week. Uh, but today in particular, uh, we had met myself, Jeremy Olson from our highway. We had met with Mass DOT representatives, um, and they came out, uh, they were from district to our district. Uh, they were in the area, they were making the rounds to Brookfield and to, uh, into Ware. Um, but they were talking about, uh, all upcoming, uh, transportation program, um, upcoming grants. Um, uh, they, they gave us, uh, access to new web portals and websites, uh, that, that we can take a look at, uh, for the Chapter Ninety program. Um, our, our one-stop applications, I asked them, I inquired, uh, with them, um, you know, where they see us going with that and they, they're, they're, they're finalizing a, um, a review committee now. Um, their anticipated announcement may be in September or October to see, you know, for awards. Um, we have two, um, uh, projects submitted, uh, grants requests were submitted with them. Um, so we're, we're, we're very hopeful. Uh, but it was nice to meet, um, Darrell and Ben. Uh, both came out here, um, from a Mass DOT. Um, I spoke to, uh, Ben before, uh, on a few matters. Uh, but, um, we've got now their contact information, um, and, um, you know, a, a clear channel of, of communication.
And um you know, a a clear channel of of communication between some representatives at DOT and and the town, which is um important. So um that took place today. Also this week, um I had um uh as we're continuing to finish along on employee evaluations. We have um uh almost completed all of them, they're they're about now ninety percent of the way done. Highway, uh Department of Highway, Jeremy was out on vacation, he just came back this week, we're gonna start him next week. Building and planning still needs to be done, um and pretty much everything over here is done, senior center is done. Fire is done, we wrapped up the last fire this week. And I believe the police have one or two left, one left, one left. So um the that that um that process is 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 winding down, so we should be able to wrap that up hopefully uh by next week, if not the week after, it'd be fully completed. And so um for the first year, um it was a a you know, to to learn about how we can improve to make the process better. You know, obviously, it would be uh wiser to start maybe a little bit earlier in May, uh to spread out the process a little bit longer. Didn't realize how long it would actually take, you know, uh to uh to go through it and do it um do it all. So I wanted to update uh the Board on that. I did also receive a correspondent a personal note uh this week uh from the state auditor. And uh that's from Diane Digli- Dig- Digliano. And she uh she wrote me a personal note, uh thank you for your interest in in the public building authority concept. I've asked my team to connect with you via email, and I I just got the email actually today. As always, she feels free to to reach out. The the auditor is 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 key in in pushing some of this stuff with this public uh concept of of um public safety, municipal buildings. To have a similar formula to um how schools are built uh in the Commonwealth. They, you know, they have a a formula that, you know, a reimbursement formula, some communities get up to eighty percent reimbursement uh for for uh school building projects. You know, there's not nothing on on the city side or the town side uh that would have that type of reimbursement. So she, uh Diane, uh is is leading the charge on on trying to um to get something like that. She's a former state rep, now it's just a state auditor, uh so she had reconnected uh with me, I ran into her at a conference a few weeks ago. So um I'm gonna stay on top of that connection and try to, you know, see where this uh bill progresses at the State House in anticipation of what we're trying to do here with our feasibility uh plan. And then hopefully, as the plan moves forward, to see um, you know, what the state is thinking about doing for municipal buildings.
Have you reached out to Ian Goby about that, because she was gonna be sponsoring a bill? When I talked to her, she said she was gonna sponsor a bill for public safety type things, because everybody, everybody in the area is in similar conditions, they they have um they have a need for public safety buildings. Some have already gotten them at a great expense to the community. And some of the poorer towns just can't afford to do it, so she was looking at doing something just like that, similar to this one, she's trying to sponsor something. So maybe reach out to her, see how far she is in that process.
Funny you should mention, I did call her not too long ago.
She's not in the Senate anymore.
No, well.
I did I did call her not too long ago, and uh she was just getting sworn in the day I had called her, so uh in her new role, so I I will reach out to her again.
See see how far she got, e- even if she's not in an active ma- maybe uh lesser, picked up from, was it Derek Wiss?
No, he's he's gone, uh so Jake Oliveri.
Jake Oliveri, uh maybe he's picking up on that and moving forward with it too, so.
Why is this coming out of the auditor's office?
Well, y- you know, I, she's a former state rep, right? And, you know, the auditor's office, uh you know, doesn't have a lot of thrills to it. You know, unless you're gonna get audited, right? And nobody wants to get audited. So um, you know, to 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 kind of maybe, you know, get the the attention of the office out there, alright, and to try to maybe draw some attention to uh the importance of this topic. You know, she's been kinda spearheading that along.
Say whatever gets it done.
Yeah, right. Um and then finally, uh tonight, um I I was, uh I I know I had mentioned this before, uh but I finally got it, it's it's now official. I've I've now been officially uh certified as a Massachusetts publicing, uh public uh purchasing official. The MC PPO distinguished after they did a extensive background check on me, I finally made it.
Very good. You passed the background check.
I passed, I passed it.
Well, we feel bad about that.
I hope so, yeah. Congratulations, very good, it's very good to see, and um big accomplishment. We appreciate your hard work and moving forward with it.
Thank you.
Good job, um anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Do you have any questions, Frank?
I do not.
Alright, um new business, do we have any new business?
Uh no.
Old business?
No.
Okay, correspondence, uh you got correspondence from Chief LaVoy about getting a grant.
No, I got that one, I got that one.
So you have a grant?
So this is a grant that the Select Board previously authorized me to apply for, uh this is through uh the
Do you want this, Chief?
Department.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for putting this on, I didn't know it was gonna be on the board.
Sorry.
Good to hear you're around.
Yeah, I know. So this is a grant that we've applied for uh many years, and it's one that we that most of the time we do get, uh you know, sometimes they have less funding. It's through the Department of Conservation and Recreation through the state of Massachusetts. It is specifically geared towards brush firefighting and forest firefighting. So we've gotten uh in the past, we've gotten some, you know, coats and pants from them, we've got tools from them, we've gotten hose from them. This particular round, uh are the oldest equipment that we have when it comes to brush flyers was brush fire helmets. So I applied for a grant, it is a fifty percent matching grant, uh where the town puts up a certain amount, and it's based on population, how much you can apply for. So basically, the town puts up fifty percent and the state will match that grant out of that. We have a an existing line item for these types of matching grants. So we were, this is the one that uh I was approved by the Board to apply for, been waiting for quite a while for it to come back. Been corresponding with them a couple times, asking on the progress, and they just kept saying, it's coming, it's coming. And finally, we did get the approval letter that said that you uh were accepted and and they did approvals for that grant. So I'm asking the Board tonight to uh or or just asking them to accept, formally accept the grant, so that I can go ahead and start ordering the equipment.
How much is it?
Um it is a total of five thousand, yeah, five thousand dollars, uh which will be, so it would be, you know, half from the town and half from the from Department of Conservation and Recreation.
So it's twenty-five hundred from us?
Yes, well, twenty twelve, two thousand four fifty is what they're asking for, that's what the amount that the grant that they approved on their end. So two thousand four fifty, so we have to match that, another two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Very good.
Make a motion?
Well, um this is not on the agenda.
No, it isn't, yeah.
So we'll have to put this on for the August third meeting.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yep. I'll get this back to you, Cameron.
What, congratulations on that, is there a time timeline here?
I believe there's a year window in that, a lot plenty of time to do that, I'll wait on it, it's coming in, you know, this actually is gonna timeout really nicely because our new brush slash mini attack truck is probably coming in August. So uh that's a project, it's uh I just saw pictures of the truck for the first time, we're in the process of putting all the cabinetry and everything else in there, but it's really a it's a nice looking truck, I just had, we were randomly selected, uh just just so the Board knows how competitive this particular grant is a was come came through the Assistant Fire Finish Grant, which is for FEMA. And we got randomly selected to do a site audit uh from the feds. So the feds came out uh this week and Saturday, and they looked at all the paperwork, they looked at procurement processes, they looked at all the things that we're required to do, especially when you're dealing with federal money, and they were very impressed with everything, they had no uh issues, but, you know, like when I was talking to them, you know, in that particular round, which was the FY FY twenty, we got that grant, and that's how long this process has taken as of COVID and all the related, you know, chassis issues and supply issues. There was over three thousand, it was thirty-five hundred applicants for vehicles that year across the country. And we were one of a hundred that was awarded for that, so it's a super competitive grant. It's uh most of the time, what's happened, what he was telling me was that, yes, the AFGs continue to go on, but it's been level funded for years. They haven't added any more money to it, and because of inflation, because of the supply issues, because of the chassis, the huge differences on what the chassis costs, they're not awarding nearly as many grants now because they can't afford it, you know, because they they're realizing that, you know, the five hundred thousand dollars they awarded for a partial payment for an engine, the engine now costs nine hundred thousand dollars. So the equation's a little bit broken there, and they're working on looking for some additional funding, but normally, they only fund, even outside the vehicles for equipment and stuff, they only fund about fifteen to twenty percent of the actual projects that come before them through their uh review process and all the things that they do. So, you know, this particular grant, half of it was paid for, you know, basically funded from the town and half of it was funded from the feds, but, you know, to be one of a hundred out of the three hundred, you know, thirty-five hundred applicants is pretty, pretty special thing, you know, so that's a that's a good thing. So that truck should be coming in, um you know, within the next few weeks, I I I expect to see it, so order the brush helmets to go with it, it's icing on the cake, you know, definitely, so. Thank you.
Very good, good job, thank you. Okay. Alright, and then the other correspondence, why is Jill asking us?
Because she says, no, it's just an FYI. Apparently, the Select Board have to say it's okay for her to take off the day before a holiday. And it happens to hit Columbus Day.
It's a personnel board.
Why do we have to do that?
We have, it should have been on the agenda that way.
We don't have to vote on it, we just have to acknowledge what you gave us.
Why is that written like that?
Because you're the personnel board.
I know, but why?
Bylaw says that you have to notify the personnel board if you're taking a day off before a holiday or a day after a holiday.
Should be the department head making those decisions.
Well, she said she got permission from the department head, but she has to let the personnel board know, so she just.
Okay, she let us know, I just think this is one of those bylaws that probably should just, it should be department heads, you know.
Right, they should manage their own department.
Right.
I'm just.
Alright. Cool, thanks, we we received it.
Okay.
Okay, comments and concerns, do you have any comments and concerns?
I do not, I was gonna talk about the Parks concert, but I guess we'll see.
Yeah, see where it is.
See where it is tomorrow.
Whether whether or not, if if it's canceled, you know, continue another day.
Between ten and twelve, it's a month by noon.
Ten and twelve, alright.
And if it's not canceled, should be a good time.
Yeah.
As long as it stays dry. I got wood on that. And you're just gonna send us an email?
Uh yeah, I can send uh all departments out, I'll put it on Tower, um
Yep.
Yeah.
The message board will change that.
Throw it on Facebook.
Department Chair, I'll make contact directly with the Chiefs on that too.
Yeah, Parks is pretty good, putting it out there.
Yeah, well.
Okay, very good. Jill, you? A while back, um Stop the Bleed was a subject, but where are we in that with the process? Was that your project?
Yes, uh I believe, well, kits are with AEDs.
Okay, so they're in there, training, people receive training?
We have CPR, and they they touched upon Stop the Bleed in CPR.
He calls an instructor and stop the bleeding.
So they did Stop the Bleed too?
I believe he. I would remember that CPR one, but.
Touch tourniquet?
I have uh at least five of my sitter members got taught the class, and uh Dan, because he's an instructor.
And those are with AEDs?
Yes, that's they're they're in the same cabinets as the
So in the same cabinet?
And we did, at the last time, we did a um an or department head, not a department head, but employee sit down. I did have everyone stay for a few minutes afterwards, and I went over all the AEDs and the equipment and everything like that, so you know, so that everybody that works in the offices is familiar, we opened it up, looked at everything, passed it around, so that they are familiar with the defibrillator units that have been placed in service. And they've all been through the CPR and Stop the Bleed, to my knowledge at this point, I believe.
Alright, very good, uh I know that was something that was in the past, and we just won't have to follow up with it. The other thing, cameras, okay, some somebody from somewhere has been dumping a lot of stuff in our dumpster out here, and you know, I think it's about time that we upgrade and look at getting some cameras put into the building here on the sides of the building, or at least on the four corners, so we can cover, you know, what's going in and out here. Cause I know I've been here, um you know, after hours, um late at night to sign the warrants or whatever, and you see vehicles driving through the parking lot, or just sitting in the parking lot, and that's just kinda odd, and you know, no purpose for people to just sit in our parking lot here, um you know, don't know what they're doing, so. It would be nice if they were planning something, we'd record it on video. So I think that's something we should definitely look at, along with the the lighting underneath the the meetings overhang there, because it's completely dark, and you can't read anything in there, so. Are you good with that?
Yeah, um I'd also like to maybe propose, I'd like to see the bigger sheets of paper for postings. And if we do these skinny ones, because there's not enough room in the board, then let's add another panel or something to that. Cause if we're gonna put lights in, we're gonna start monkeying with the the hood, right? So let's make it longer and maybe add another section.
I think we should add another section.
I don't think doing one of these
I thought that was the problem, that these got too big.
I think it was just too much stuff being posted in there, not taking it down.
Oh, that's, yeah, okay, that's another issue, I guess.
I don't really see the, it's not overcrowded in there?
No, it gets overcrowded when we have um the annual town meeting and the special town meeting, I mean, that's the only time it gets super crowded in there. Depending upon how many sheets we have, we have to use, end up using both of those in ones, so then you just have your meeting notices in the center. And then the big sheets would not fit when during those times. So you're thinking big sheets, so you can have bigger print?
No, they ju- they need to be
More detailed.
More detailed.
To put on there what what's going on.
They're hard to read the way they are now.
Yeah.
Everything's squished into this little, I mean, it's like a third of a page, is it even, I guess that's half a page, isn't it?
It is half a page.
But like if you look at the ones that are done for the Community Development Advisory Committee, those are good, cause there's plenty of room, everything's listed out. I think that's the way they should be.
David?
No.
Alright, um anybody else have any comments?
On that note of uh board out there, what if every uh department had like a section that they posted? And you know, one of them is a cemetery, it was a planning board, it was the You know, one of them is a cemetery, it was a planning board, it was the, you know.
They do it by date. So right now, it's done by date.
No, what I'm saying, like, say you were looking for a planning board meeting. It was, it's a planning board, nothing, nothing was for the planning board. Nothing would be there. It would be, you know.
It's not a better.
It's got something to.
Yeah, but if, some people, like cemetery only has a meeting every once in a while. So that section, if we needed it, it would just be for cemetery. So I think if, instead of that, if you put, well, I know, but instead of that, if you put big block letters at the top of it, what the board is, I think that will solve your problem of looking for things versus having a separate.
Well, if you did a bigger sheet of paper, you could do that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Sure, okay. You see what she's saying?
Just put.
So you have a big posting, a big sheet, but now you put planning board on the top or cemetery, right? So it's kind of, seems, serves a similar purpose. It's not a reserved spot, but.
I, I know what you're talking about because I've gone out there a few times, like, okay, whose meeting is this? And try to look at and figure it out. Yeah, they're very tiny. And I can't see somebody who, you know, my vision's getting bad now. I can't imagine somebody who's on the older side having an easier time looking at that than I am. So, but.
I'm sure layers.
Well, you know, the thing is getting the message out to the public. And if you can't get the message out there, you know, you wanna be transparent. I don't want somebody out there with a big old magnifying glass trying to look at, you know, what meeting is, it is, when it's being held. God forbid they need to know what's on the agenda, you know? I think, I like your idea, you know, but we are limited too.
Do you want me to come up with like a template of what it should look like?
If you would like to do that, I can do it too.
Okay, go ahead.
I can go ahead and do, copy what CMRPC does.
Yeah, but with a big title, big department.
I'll do it and bring it up on the third. How's that?
Okay. I mean, if you want, just email me a copy.
I will.
Go back and forth a couple of times and we'll figure out a good format and then we'll. Okay.
You have any comments on that?
No, I think that's a great idea.
All right, anybody else have any comments or concerns? Joe?
Well, today I told me a kid was shot in Boston. I think it'd be a good idea to anybody, whether they own a handgun or a long gun, buy a trigger lock. They're not that expensive. It doesn't matter if you have a kid in your house or your next door neighbor does. Don't keep your ammunition with your weapon. Just for safety's sake. It doesn't take that long for your neighbor's kid to just happen to walk in your house. Oh, here's a gun, pick it up. And God knows what'll happen. For the sake of a trigger lock, buy the trigger lock.
Good advice. I would actually recommend getting a safe though. Lock it up in a safe and lock your ammunition separately from it. It should be stored together. But yeah, you know, gun safety is very, very important within our community. And I don't know if we, do we do any gun safety courses in our town?
Closest one, Navy Tombstone.
Brookfield.
I think Patriot Firearms is starting to do them now too. They just opened up in where?
Oh, by, going towards Walmart.
Going by Walmart. I think they're starting to do them. Like, I thought something on Facebook, they were doing it.
I've seen that, right?
Run the other one out, that one Palmer there.
It's right before Teresa's on the right, if you're going towards Walmart.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's right there. It's a brand new spot. So, but yeah. I don't know if we had, we had like a gun safety day or something. Because I know some, some places they, so my past life, I was a chief firearms instructor for a gun range. And I taught all the firearm safety courses and did all the state courses so you can get your LTCs. And I taught for the NRA. One of the things that we'd get is, we could get guns, you know, trigger locks and cable locks to help. And police departments would be able to give them out.
I still have them.
They used to give those out.
It'd be nice if we could do something like that. If somebody is having an issue, we could probably give them, you know, do you have trigger locks or cable locks?
Cable locks.
What's a cable lock?
So a cable lock is, it's just a wire, like a, it's like a bicycle cable. But it's a thin, thin wire. They're usually red, so you could see them. But it depends on who manufactures them. And you just lock it through and you could take it, run it through the, through the, you know, through the magazine well in the slide and lock it together. They're okay to stop somebody from picking up and shooting it immediately, but it doesn't stop somebody from stealing your gun. That's why I always recommend using gun safe. Put it in a safe, something you can bolt down or bolt against something because they'd have to pick up your whole house or do a lot of work to try to get it out of there. Or get a bigger, heavier one. Some of the smaller ones, inexpensive ones like stack on safes. Somebody could just pick it up and carry it out of your house if you don't bolt it down. But if you get something like, yeah, Tractor Supply, they sell some good ones. And they're, they're like thousand pound safes. They're huge. They're very heavy, you know, you're not getting them, you're not moving it.
Barely get it in the house.
Yeah, barely get in your house. Yeah, don't, ultimately, that's what you want. But a lot of people can't afford that. And having a trigger, you know, having a trigger lock on there is really good because it's difficult to compromise a trigger lock, so. So, but cable locks, they work too. Yo, Katie?
Wrong flight.
Well, if you need mouth to mouth, Adam's there.
I was just saying, CPR?
We could hang around and watch this too. All right, do you have anything other than the cable locks?
No, we only have cable locks. Probably years ago, there was a grant in the state. We got a bunch of them handed out. Then I probably got a box or two left that people would come in for firearms. If they need one, we hand them out. But every gun that's sold in the state is supposed to come with one, either trigger lock or the cable lock.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, maybe if you can research something like that, maybe we could do something like, you know, like a gun safety day. See if we can get some trigger locks for a grant or something. Good advice. Thank you, Joe. Anything else?
Ready?
Anybody on Zoom have any comments or concerns? Is there even anybody on Zoom?
Too dusty.
Oh.
No.
All right, no comments or concerns. Next meeting is gonna be August third.
Yep.
At six PM on Thursday. That will be our next meeting. So we won't have meetings for the next two weeks. So August third will be our next meeting. Good? Did you have anything pressing that needed to be dealt with before then?
No, not, not that I'm aware of.
Bills?
We might.
Okay.
Yeah, but anything we needed to get paid should have been paid by today, so.
Anything, well, if there's anything pressing.
This is it.
Yeah.
Well, that's for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four.
The one, the only one that I had pressing was the one thousand, no, the, the one for Northeast IT for seventeen ninety-seven. You guys welded that in, so I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So August third, two thousand twenty-three at six PM for the Board of Selectmen meeting. That will be our next meeting. And.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.